Carol, roll call please.
Vice Mayor, may I speak?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Susanna Murdock.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Spaulding.
Here.
Mayor Dan Landrum.
Here. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Anyone have any comments? Everyone had a chance to see them. Entertain a motion to accept it.
Motion to approve.
And we're going to two sets of minutes. Yeah, this is for the work session and regular meeting in December. We have a motion to approve.
You have a motion to adjourn?
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So Paul Hendricks wouldn't mind making his way to the microphone. The next item on the agenda is going to be the Centennial Celebration update. Keep in mind for the rest of the council that we also have this as a discussion item for the next count for the work session. So we're going to spend time, more time talking about this than just Paul's update tonight. You know what's not on here? Yeah, Citizens' Opportunities below this. Okay. Paul and his wife, Snoda, have been working on this project and they're also meeting with Boyd tomorrow. And so if any additional information comes from that meeting, Boyd, if you could let us know if it's something we need to know before the, before the next meeting. So, and Paul, you're welcome to have Snoda join you.
No, it's a secret.
No secrets.
Happy New Year. And I wanted to...
Mayor, if I could, can you give your, your name and...
Oh, Paul Hendricks, 31 Mountain Orchard Path. I started to do that. I didn't know if I had to do that for this. 31 Mountain Orchard Path, my apologies. Happy New Year, congratulations to our newly elected and re-elected and ongoing council members to Mayor Landrum and to Vice Mayor Speak. Very proud of all of you. Very pleased with... On April 14th, 1919, the town of Signal Mountain was chartered. There were actually several different little dates right in there, but that seems to be the pertinent date. And on April 14th, 2019, we will obviously be having our 100th birthday. We plan to, we're hoping to have celebrations going on throughout the year, but the committee has been mainly focusing on that week, slightly over a week, which we're calling Founder's Week. And so we will start it on April 4th, which will be our kickoff celebration. And this event will be held at Alexian Inn, Alexian Village, the old Alexian Inn, which is really much of the genesis of our town. You know, the Alexian was built and they expanded and they built a golf course and the cows got on the golf course and they needed to pass a law to keep the cows off the golf course. So they founded the town of Signal Mountains so they could pass laws. That's our illustrious beginnings. The kickoff was actually, is actually the event my wife agreed to take charge of. Nepotism can be a good thing, believe me. The, that will be held at Alexian Inn. And I should say, before I go further ahead, I want to recognize my fellow committee members, past and present. We've had some, we have some people who've been with us the whole time. We've worked on this for a few years now. And we've had some come and go and we've had leadership changes. Eventually, they ran out of other people, so it devolved upon me. But we have had a good group of people going through, working with us, and I want to thank all of them. I'm not going to go through all the different names. Y'all all know who they are, but, so this is, I am, I am but a representative. This is not me. This is all of us. So April 4th, we're going to be meeting at Alexian, and that's just going to be a kickoff. That's really an opportunity to announce this thing, to recognize our, our council, our, obviously, town leadership, to enjoy our future. We're hoping to have displays, and Alexian wants to do a, a display on their history. And our history committee and some of the people in the committee who are really focusing on the historical aspect of this whole event will be putting together displays to present or to just have out there for people to see photos and different things. I don't even know what all is going to be there yet. We've, the, our current hope, and I think this is pretty definite, is that one of the stage bands or jazz bands from the high school will be doing some performing. Weather is obviously an issue in early April. It could be wonderful, it could be awful, we don't know. But it's such a large space, we think unless, unless we are overwhelmingly successful at attendance, that we'll be able to, to have it primarily inside. If the weather's nice, of course, we'll open the windows and, and allow it to spread out. But there'll be some refreshments. We have some local merchants who are donating some food and we're going to have some other, more, more on the snack variety. This will run probably like four to seven, the early part being more just kind of fun, chance to visit the inn and, and see the displays. And then a program will be starting. Now that, the big issue of the program is, this is where we really need input from the council, because obviously, it's kind of the political end of it, where we're inviting various, you know, VIPs, people to visit. So we really kind of need the council to decide who we want to invite and let us know and some ideas on who might speak. We sort of hoping, obviously, that Mayor Landrum will sort of help to, to emcee the whole event. And obviously, we, Boyd and all the rest of the, and any other, any of the staff we want to have there. But, but that's, the program's really going to be with a lot of input from the council. And you can feed back to Snoda on that. So April 4th will be that event, the kickoff, to start things off. The next event we have, well, the next, next night, April 5th, the MAC will be presenting a play based on the work of Imabel Miles, who obviously was a prominent writer and, and naturalist who lived up here. And this will be presented, as I understand it, that weekend and the next weekend, Friday and Saturday night. It's called Deep Roots. I think it originally started as something called Twisted Roots. I don't know where Barb went, but...
She's right. That's right.
There you are, way back in the corner. And then they changed the name a little bit, but Butch Ross's wife, Trish, is going to be producing it or directing it, and that will be a, a nice chance to explore the history of the town through that theatrical event. On the 6th, Saturday, the 6th, that's going to be Town Services, Town Departments Day. It's a chance for the town to really show off. And I know Boyd has been talking with some of the different departments about having open houses, having, you know, whatever displays they want to do. And the MAC is looking at having an event which will be most likely more in towards kids, and I'm going to obviously defer to Barb and to the MAC Board on that. This is obviously not our event. This is not the Centennial Committee's week or year. This is the town's year, all the citizens and, and the town itself. And this is really a chance for the town to show what it wants to do. What we're kind of hoping is that we'll have some sort of a shuttle that can go from event to event, so people can just park somewhere, probably at one of the churches, and, and then just hop on a shuttle and go to, you know, Police and Fire, to the MAC, Public Works, wherever else. I know Karen had mentioned some things she was thinking about at the library. I don't know exactly what all's planned there even, but we're hoping, you know, people can just use that shuttle to go around and celebrate that. And then, of course, that evening will be another showing of Deep Roots. April 7th, Sunday, Dottie McAllister on our committee has been working with the churches about, just considering the Centennial as a possible conversation piece in some of their services. So that'll be up to individual churches, obviously. And Lee Althouse on our committee is working on putting together what we're calling a Centennial Stroll, which would basically be kind of history walks in the old town area, the original part of the town, visiting some of the highlights and with some of our residents who are very historically educated, to, to help them learn about parts of the town. Hopefully, it'll be a nice, pretty day, a nice afternoon to go out and walk through old town and see what kind of work needs to be done on the sidewalks. Now, Monday, April 8th, we've currently got planned to be a historical presentation with the county, county historian, Linda Mines. It just, I'll be honest with you, it just occurred to me as I was putting this together last night, that April 8th will also be the second Monday and therefore a council meeting night. So I mentioned this to Rita. Rita Irvin is the one really heading this up, along with Jim Dowdett on our committee. So it's conceivable that night may move a night, or it's conceivable they may just, you know, compete with y'all for attention. I'm not sure. That will be up to Rita and all that. But there will be an evening where we, where we do actually a presentation on the history of Signal Mountain. And we hope to follow this with other talks later in the, later in the year, but that will be a, a prime event.
Can I make, just to, we do have a council meeting that night. If there was anyone that we wanted to, if we had an oldest resident or longest resident, we could have some sort of a, some honoring take place here as well, to go along with the Centennial.
Resolution?
Yeah.
That would be a great idea. So the following weekend will be kind of the culmination of Founder's Week, though clearly not the grand finale of the, of the Centennial year. But we're planning that following Saturday, April 13th, we are going to have a picnic. This will be, you know, somewhat similar to what we traditionally do on some of our holidays at the, at the park, at the old playground, at Althouse Park. And then we're going to have a picnic, which I'm going to, as you said, I'm going to, Susan and I are going to be meeting with Boyd tomorrow about putting together, getting into some more details on the budget and trying to update on that. But we're hoping to have a, probably, you know, hamburgers and hot dogs kind of an event that will be open to the town, have a picnic, have some entertainment. Traditionally, we do the parade before that, but that morning is actually ACT Day for the students. And so we're contemplating or really planning pretty seriously to have the parade after the picnic, which will allow students to be available, because we're hoping to have the marching band as part of the parade. So most likely, the parade, plus with weather being an issue, if it is chilly, it's likely to be a little warmer in the afternoon than in the morning anyway. So most likely, we're going to reverse things, have the picnic in the late morning, early afternoon, and then have the parade after that. And then we'll be having fireworks that evening. We're still trying to make a final decision about location on the fireworks. There's some sentimental interest in trying to have them back at the old, at the, at the park, at the Althouse Park. But the last few years, of course, we've been having them at a Shackleford Ridge Park. So that is a decision which has not been finalized yet. We're contemplating having some other activities along with that. Ideas range from entertainment to possibly some games and maybe do some old-fashioned kind of games, you know, sack races, three-legged races, some things. So this is an idea that just came up from, I guess I can give Dan and Angie credit, because they mentioned this to me. Why don't you do this? And I said, that's a very cool idea. So it's something I think we might want to pursue, is be a fun thing to do wherever we end up having the fireworks. So that's still tentative in terms of what we're going to do that evening, but we will be having fireworks, same people that do the fireworks for the Fourth of July we've talked to. So we will have fireworks and then that will be the end of our Founder's Week. However, we are hoping to continue. We're inviting all our local merchants, organizations, churches, any groups that want to have other Centennial events. It's the town's celebration. And we want to encourage people to be creative and to be ready to celebrate. We're also kind of toying with the idea of doing something else in the fall, and that's probably way too far away to do any more, anything more, to say anything more about than that about, because there's really no planning. We've had different ideas and some things that we just haven't had time to put together for the, for April, so we're thinking that might give us some more time to plan some of these things. So we may not be done yet in April. So that's, that's the basic outline of Founder's Week. And I do want to say that we do have a website, which is signalmountain100, signalmountain100.com. And it, it still needs content. We've put some things in there, we've got some photographs, we've got some schedule, we've got a little bit of history stuff, but we're urging people, Bill Chapman is our kind of webmaster, and he's working with the company that, that did the website. So we can, people can submit stories, videos, photos, things to put on there. So we're encouraging people, and if you look on there and see something you think doesn't look right, then send it in. You know, it's, once again, this is, this is something we want the whole town input, having input on. But that's the website, and it is, it is live. It's still not available on search engines, but that's supposed to happen very soon, if it hasn't already. Our next meeting will be this Saturday, 10 o'clock at Alexian. They've actually, we finally got things worked out. We've got keys to the place now. So we have one or two meetings, we end up on the porch. But Alexian has been very, very anxious and very cooperative to work with us and to be a part of this, so we've been very appreciative of that. There's a resident out there, Charlie McCloy, who is their, I guess, resident representative or liaison, and he's working with us real closely and working with Snoda to put together the thing for the Fourth. So he's been great, Alexian's been great, and their, so our, our access to that is very, very easy now. So we're going to probably meet there more. So this Saturday, 10 o'clock, Alexian Inn, we will be meeting, and we're really encouraging volunteers to show up. We've had a lot of people send names in, we've had a few come to some meetings and, and some have already taken on jobs or looked for things to do. So I've put out some emails, I'm going to put out some social media and just let people know if they want to show up at 10 o'clock at Alexian. We're hoping to have kind of a brief meeting just to touch base and then let some of the various groups working, like the people working on the parade, Troy Kennedy is working on that, Snoda, of course, is working on April 4th, different people working on different things, to kind of break up and go to their various neutral corners and, and, and work on that.
All right.
So I think that is all that I had to say.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, and you may have already thought of this, but as you were talking about the picnic and, and having just different things going on there, have you reached out to the folks at the Mountain Opry?
Yes, yes. Ken Holloway is, has written a song, which I have not heard yet, but he has supposedly written a song about the Centennial. And we are hoping to have him perform that at the kickoff event.
Wonderful.
And so, and there will be put in, you know, I don't know about other contacts other than that, but yeah, he's, he's been involved. Thank you, yeah. We're, there are probably people we haven't talked to or haven't talked to enough, but if, if you think of anyone else that you think might want to be involved, tell them to show up Saturday or give me a call or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And we are talking about this at the work sessions.
Yeah.
Let everybody's wheels turn and come up with that. Thank you, Doc.
Any other questions or anything? And thanks to Bob, I didn't mention Bob. Bob's been our very helpful liaison and been to most of our meetings, and it's been great working with you.
Thanks, Paul.
Look forward to doing more of that. So, okay, thank you very much, and I look forward, our meetings are all public meetings, so you're welcome to all come and you won't get in trouble with the, with the public meeting police if you show up. So anytime council members want to come, we'd love to have you. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? See you all soon. Thank you.
All right, next is Citizens' Opportunity to address the council, so make your way to the podium and state your name. Come on up. If you, if we have a lot, it's okay to form a line, so...
Hi, my name's Charlie Gardner, 127 Golf Drive. And I, as a way of introduction, I recently moved back here, a couple months ago, from having spent the last 30 years in California. And, but I grew up here, went to Signal Mountain Elementary, and I've got a lot of friends and family, and made a conscious decision when it came time to retire to come back to my roots and get reacquainted with the place I really call home, and I'm glad to be here. I was, had the opportunity to serve in my community in Half Moon Bay, California, which is a small town south of San Francisco, on several terms, on the Cabrillo Unified School District, on the Board of Trustees, and past president of the board. So in, not only myself, but my family has a rich tradition in serving and education and public service. But this is, is not about me. This, I was coerced by my brother to get up and read something tonight, should be with me. And he's, he's been here at several meetings. His name's Ellis Gardner, and so I'll read what he wrote. It says, "My name, or my brother's name, is Ellis Gardner, and he lives right around the corner at 103 Stratford Way, and represents the fourth generation of my family to make Signal Mountain our home. Last fall, he joined the Signal Mountain MACC Advisory Board. The Signal Mountain Elementary Preservation Fund is comprised of board members and volunteers that selflessly donate their time, their talents, and their treasures. Not only have they championed charitable donations from the public, but they have spent countless hours of their own time scraping, painting, and refinishing floors. The SMPF is a valued partner to the Signal Mountain MAC Advisory Board, and I wholeheartedly endorse formalizing the town's relationship with these superstars. Sincerely, Ellis Gardner, CRS, ABR..." Blah, 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 blah. So he asked me to read that for him. I hope it's not too controversial that I get run out of town on my first time here. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
Dead Monroe, 907 Cherokee. This is just something that's, for your general consideration, but I'm peeved, I guess would be the right word, that people come in here and basically suggest that we're not doing things as well as we should, and they have better ideas. The first one would be the Chamber of Commerce Red Bank. Now, I don't know if we're paying them anything, but I hope not. I was a Red Bank carrier, know the Red Bank from the tunnel all the way up to the pit stop and every inch in between. They, if they are not coming in to advise us, okay. But if they are, they haven't done too well on their own, so I can't see what they could possibly give us. The next was a coalition of small cities. I cannot figure for the life of me why we'd even consider joining them. I just talked to Bo earlier, and he gets information on what's coming down in legislation that affects us. That's all I've heard that they have to give us. And they wanted, at the last count, $17,500. I don't know whether it's one time, every month, every year, what, but it's just my opinion, it ain't worth it. It's not that old. I don't even know why they formed up, what problems they have solved or anything, but I don't think we need them personally. And give them any money, I think would be ludicrous. Thank you.
I'm Wanda Newman, and I live at 205 Timberlins. I was here in 18 suggesting something be done at the end of Timberlins to get off the mountain, or turn, or what. I wondered if we had any update on it. We've got four or five Yale streets.
Do, do you mean at Five Points or all the way down at the highway?
No, at the end of Timberlins.
At Five.
You've got those five Yale signs, I believe. And then James is not a Yale. And coming here tonight, I looked, nothing was coming. I turned to come out here, and a man was coming down James real fast and blowing his horn at me. And I should have been blowing my horn at him from the speed he was going. But I wondered if we've had any updates, was talking about a roundabout or red light or something.
I think there's nothing new, but I think it continues to bubble to the surface periodically
I think you all are going to check on, to see if there would be room for a roundabout or something there.
Yes, ahead.
Anyone else? Going what? All right, so we're closing the Citizens' Comments section. Quite a few resolutions to look at tonight. Start with the easiest ones. This is a resolution appointing Michaela Farmer as a member of the Town of Signal Mountain's Tree Board. Is Michaela here?
Yes.
That, you're Michaela? I was wondering that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the emails that we've seen from Michaela are so positive and refreshing and it's great to have...
I host in Signal Mountain neighborhood constantly.
Yes, yeah, no, but that's great. Do we, we have an enthusiastic volunteer. Do we have a motion to accept her?
I didn't even know about the opportunity. It was Billy Sandy that actually told me, hey, you'd be perfect for this. I never even thought about it, so...
Excellent.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Me opposed? Pass is 5-0. Congratulations. Thanks for joining and being willing to help. Okay, so this next one, I'll read the header on this. This is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Town of Signal Mountain and the principal agents of the Signal Mountain Elementary Preservation Fund, establishing procedures for fundraising and authorizing certain projects to benefit the former Signal Mountain Elementary School building. If Cheryl Crowe, oh Cheryl Crowe.
All right.
If Cheryl's here, please sing to us, but if not, if Cheryl Graham will come to the microphone. In that header, it mentions the principal agents, and they are Angie Landrum, Cheryl Graham, Brooke Daniel, Brian Baker, and John Har.
We could, we could use her money.
We could, yeah.
This would be really good.
You know, I went to high school with her.
Really?
She was my dance partner in a dance-a-thon, actually.
You could be our contact.
Yeah. If you don't believe me, look it up on Wikipedia. It's, it's there. So tell us about the Signal Mountain Education Preservation Fund.
Okay. It's Cheryl Graham, G-R-A-H-A-M, at 405 James Boulevard. We've only known each other a few years, and I'm surprised that you messed up my name. Okay, a little brief history. The SME Preservation Fund is a nonprofit corporation organized and operated exclusively for charitable purposes to restore, maintain, and improve the historic Signal Mountain Elementary School for the benefit of the residents of Signal Mountain and nearby communities. Our goal is to help drive improvement projects that will allow the oldest public building on the mountain to continue to thrive for decades to come. In 2018, volunteers donated 1,048 hours, where's Kent? Scraping floors, making wood that was all bumped up because of moisture be nice and level again so we can finish them. But they donated 1,048 hours of their time and physical labor and thousands of dollars in supplies for the building. We rehab, so far, we've rehabbed three classrooms that were previously unusable, making it possible for Barb to juggle schedules and keep all the teachers and programs during the construction on the front part of the building, which is vital. We presented seven coffeehouse concerts, a Valentine's Dance, and the first annual Signals Got Talent Show, which if you missed it, it was great. We're going to do it again this year. Through donations and grants, we can fund projects both large and small. The smaller jobs, such as painting, cleaning, and basic repairs, we can continue to do with the help of volunteers from our community. We look forward to working with the town on larger projects such as the heat and air system for the theater. We have $6,000 earmarked for the sprinkler system in the back of the building. On Giving Tuesday in November, we started raising money for the new heat and air system for the theater with generous donations from the Signal Mountain Playhouse and our board members to cover the expense. We sent a fundraising letter to the 37377 zip code. And I'm here to tell you, it takes a long time to stuff 7,100 envelopes. We found that out. 100% of donations coming in for this project will go to the new heat and air system. Our goal is 40,000, and our total as of today is $23,136.87. We are fortunate to have two professional accountants on our board. Brian Baker is working on our reports this week, so we'll get copies to you soon for that. We have a coffeehouse concert with Mountain Dulcimer player Butch Ross coming up on January 26th at 7:00 PM, and a Valentine's Dance planned for February 16th at 7:00 PM also. I hope all of you can plan to come. This, coming Saturday, after you've all attended the, the Volunteer Centennial at 10 o'clock, now stop on over to the MAC, because we're going to have a workday. And this time, we are, we are concentrating our efforts on the boys restroom closest to the cafeteria, which any of you who went to school there remember, the trough in the boys bathroom. We're keeping it, but we're totally rehabbing the rest of the, of that room. So all help is needed and greatly appreciated. That's us in a nutshell. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I guess...
Or donations?
Hang on, let's see. We need a motion to, if we want to move forward with this.
So moved.
Have discussion. Motion in a second?
I'm sorry, who made the original motion?
It was Bill.
Thank you.
Dr. Bob's the second. So, any discussion? I'd like to, Boyd will explain this more fully, but you can't just give something to the town without an agreement, is the way I understand it. Is why this is necessary.
Well, you can, if you have an ongoing relationship, the scenario is far more manageable if you have an established protocol for how those things are done. One of the main things is the fundraising. In that, if they're going to raise funds and take donations and tell people that it will be used for a certain thing, those certain things, or that certain thing, needs to be authorized by the town so that we ensure that donations are used for the purpose that they're intended for. Beyond that, things like setting a threshold for projects. Since we last discussed this, I did some more research and put in the MOA that any project under $5,000, they could handle. That's half of our bid limit. That's half of the amount that has to come to council, so I thought it was a reasonable amount. And that would allow them to move forward with projects. If they raise the money and want to put a mini-split in a room, as long as they have someone that's licensed to do it, do it, then we're fine. That allows them to move forward, it means that we don't have to get involved. So we set those types of parameters through this agreement. Also, since that review, Phil took another look at it and added a paragraph at the end that dealt with, should we make a donation to them, what requirements will be, will come of that. So it's more inclusive and comprehensive now with that section in it. So we're laying all these things out on the front end for the protection of their organization, for the protection of the town, and for ease of operation on both sides.
Has the town made any donations to?
No.
Okay.
We're still waiting.
We have, you know, frankly, and... Don't throw, do she have anything hard she could throw at me? You know, for the most part, it's not gonna make a lot of sense for us to make a donation to them to spend on our property. We do have something coming up later in the agenda that does kind of, is the exception to that rule. And it's a piece of property that the way we can get rid of property really wouldn't benefit us. And they may be able to get funds for it and then turn around and use those funds in the building. Absent something like that, I really don't see that that would generally make a lot of sense. But we have that provision in the agreement, should that happen.
However, matching funds at some point would be something we may discuss later.
And if we're dealing with something like that, likely that would be a scenario where they would donate to us and we would handle the project.
Correct.
The council could agree ahead of time that we're gonna fund part of this if you raise that part or something.
Correct.
And in that instance, we would be the party that handled that project, so... But we tried to cover all the bases.
Okay.
Any other questions?
In that new paragraph, item number six, the acronym SME PF when used the second time is misphrased.
It's backwards, yes, I see it.
Good catch.
And there is also, since we're there, we would need to change that first sentence, shall file with the town clerk, change clerk to recorder. We don't have one officially of that title, so change clerk to recorder, please.
Anything else? Everybody ready to vote? Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. And we look forward to seeing all of you on Saturday, wear your painting clothes.
Tell Ellis thank you.
I will be out of town.
Yes.
My daughter is auditioning for the governor's school, so that is why I will not be there.
That's a good excuse. We'll get you the next time. Thank you all very much.
I'm glad Boyd said what he said about the next item that's on here, because the irony didn't escape me as I looked at it. He said, "You've never taken anything." The next resolution is a resolution authorizing the town manager to donate certain surplus property to the Signal Mountain Elementary Preservation Fund to assist in efforts to improve and preserve the building and grounds of the historic Signal Mountain Elementary School, and, as a result, to improve the civic, cultural, and social welfare of the community. So, the item that we're talking about is this cart. And there were packets out front, I don't know, did anybody get a packet who wanted to?
This is what we're donating?
This is, and so what, here's the thing. Barb had to submit the paperwork to Boyd for Boyd to be able to give this to them so that they can sell it and then spend the money back on the building, because the town can't sell things like this. Is that right?
Right, generally, anytime, the paperwork, the process is for disposal of surplus property. If it's a vehicle, we can put that on govdeals.com, and we could have done this, but that, that site, I don't think is a practical place to sell something like this. So since we're taking another path, it is surplus property. It was donated years ago, we've had it.
What do we use it for?
That's just it, they don't really have a use for it.
And it's actually in the way of law.
I thought it was part of the Mac when I saw the picture, I was like, what is this?
So, that's, I mean, that's the thing. It's surplus property, we have no need for it. Literally, we could throw it away. But through this process, we at least give the Preservation Fund an opportunity to try to recoup some funds for it, and then they, in turn, will use that on the building.
So I invoked your name, Barb, when I said that, because I want to make sure that you're comfortable with this, that this cart is not being taken, pulled out of your hands.
No, like you said, we received this cart as a donation several years ago. In the few years that we've had it, we've probably used it four or five times. And it's so big, it takes up so much space, and it's, it's not doing us that much good to continue hanging on to.
Okay. All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Now it starts to get a bit more complicated and expensive. Next is a resolution authorizing additional funds for the contract with professional engineering services in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to provide engineering and inspection services for the construction of a new bridge on Shoal Creek Falls Lane for the Town of Signal Mountain. So Boyd, should I take this one?
When, the Shoal Creek Falls project, Shoal Creek Falls Bridge project dates back to early 2015. And in a project like this, especially large projects, engineering services are based on a percentage of the project cost. At that time, originally, estimates we had were in the $400,000 range. Then, at the point of letting that contract, estimate was about, close to 400, or $550,000. As with several other projects in that time, from '16 to '18, where we saw an explosion in construction costs. Every project we've had. We did go back, and those of you that were here, originally, the road was gonna be straightened to allow a new bridge to be put beside the original one so the road could stay open, it's a dead end. There was significant opposition to that, from the residents. Council agreed to have the project re-engineered. And ultimately, that meant having to put in a temporary road from the back of the subdivision over to Alt Road so they could have access while the new bridge is being built exactly where the old bridge was. That was one thing that led to a significant increase in the cost in and of itself, plus the time associated with bringing the project forward. We did go back and adjust for the additional engineering for that redesign, and we contracted with them for the inspection services and everything during construction. But we realized we never went back, getting billings, we're approaching our authorization limit, and the project, actual construction, is just underway. And then going back and reviewing everything, and we realized that we had not made the adjustment for the construction cost. That's what the contract's based on, the...
The engineering fee is based on the overall construction cost?
Overall cost of the project. So the, the contract price for the construction was $915,000. So there's a significant increase there. So this adjusts, the contract is based on that, but our authorization was based on anticipated cost. So, contract's in place, but we haven't adjusted the amount of authorization we have for this contract.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I think it's always worthwhile to say what if we said no?
We would be stopping a project.
Anybody want to stop the project? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 5-0. Next, we have an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 2018...
We have some more resolutions.
Did I miss? How can there be more resolutions? I'm out of order, hold on.
I think our packets were out of order, because I've been shuffling through.
Just while he's looking at that, we, two, and I think Dan's gonna...
Yeah, Loretta and Kyle.
Touch on this more, but in an effort to make it so we can get these things on the website, we produced the packet a little differently this time. So it was kind of a different process.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a bit.
Yeah.
So this is a resolution appointing Kyle Branning as proxy for the Town of Signal Mountain's representative.
Yeah.
Loretta is first, and then Kyle, but...
Thank you. I don't see them in mine.
We could, out of order.
Starting a third time. A resolution appointing Loretta Hopper as the designated representative for the Town of Signal Mountain on the Chattanooga-Hamilton County North Georgia Transportation Planning Organization Technical Coordinating Committee. And she already serves.
She is, and in the prior meetings, we established the executive board member, which is Bill, and I'm his proxy. While Loretta's not changing, they have said that they would like a renewal resolution for this.
Give any objection to it, Loretta?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second from Susanna. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass this 5-0. And this next resolution is a partner to the one we just passed. This is a resolution appointing Kyle Branning as the proxy for the Town of Signal Mountain's representative, Loretta Hopper, on the Chattanooga-Hamilton County North Georgia Transportation Planning Organization Technical Coordinating Committee. Entertained motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Is Kyle here? He's not. If you guys haven't met Kyle, you should meet him, he's young, one of our youngest, newest employees.
Very sharp.
Yeah, super sharp guy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, so we should have the budget amendment next?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm good. This is an ordinance, and this is our second reading on this ordinance. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number 201808, entitled, "The Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget Ordinance, to provide for certain additional revenues and expenditures in this budget year." So this is, again, the second reading of what we've already done, and it's what we have to do on a regular basis as the budget changes.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Who was the second?
Bob.
Mr. Williams, could I get you to actually speak instead of raising the paper?
Sure.
I thought he did. Is your microphone not on?
It wasn't loud enough.
You're rebelling.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And so our walk-in the park ends. This one, I'll read the header for it. This is an ordinance to amend Title 11, Chapter 5 of the Town of Signal Mountain Municipal Code, entitled Firearms, Weapons, and Missiles. So, in the November meeting, some issues came up in regards to our town's firearms ordinances. And council asked Boyd to look into this, and as he did, he found that some patches that needed to be applied to our current ordinance in order to make it comply with state law. So I'll ask Boyd to take over here.
Okay. In a nutshell, what prompted the research, for lack of a better term, was the contradiction between what state organizations were telling our citizens and what our officers were telling them. And it was about coyotes and the concern with them. The TWRA would tell people that they could shoot them. And our officers would tell them that, well, no, you can't, because you can't discharge a firearm in the town. So we looked into that, and basically, it boils down to state law preempts the entire field of firearms. It originally was not the case. They preempted certain things, which basically means that municipalities or counties can't pass more restrictive laws in those regards. The Attorney General issued an opinion that said, "Well, since they didn't preempt the entire field, you can pass laws about these certain things." And the state immediately passed the law and said, "We preempt the entire field of firearms," including their use that broad. So, basically, we can't tell someone they can't do something that the state says they can. In addition to that, the state has given the Tennessee Wildlife Commission absolute and... Sorry, just lost my train of thought.
Control over hunting.
Yeah, control over hunting, they control all of that. In addition to that, a few years ago, there was a Tennessee constitutional amendment that gave citizens of Tennessee the constitutional right to hunt. So all of this kind of flowed through this process to basically amount to our inability to control those things, discharge firearms in the town and hunting in the town. We can prohibit hunting on town property, which this ordinance does. And one thing I think we should point out is that, in the Attorney General's opinions, he's clear to point out that it doesn't mean you can't enforce laws and you can't ensure the safety of people. If someone is doing... If someone is doing something that's legal, but they do it recklessly, you can still charge them. If somebody shoots and...
Hits a house.
Hits a house, they can be held accountable civilly. You can sue them for that. If they discharge a firearm and it's reckless, you can charge them with reckless endangerment or even aggravated assault. And that flows all the way down to the part of the original ordinance that talks about maliciously throwing missiles down to snowballs. If you throw something at someone, you do it maliciously, and you tend to harm them, you can be charged with an assault. We don't have to have an ordinance that specifically addresses these things. So, basically, we've aligned our ordinance to say, if you do these things, you have to do them consistent with state law. In addition to that, the area of authorization for handgun carry by permit holders has evolved, and we had to get aligned with that. So, we outline where you can and can't carry within the town.
But that's the separate.
No, that's part of the same order.
Within this one as well.
Now, the second one we have is incorporating some of that into our parks regulations.
Okay.
So, we've tried to cover all the bases in all the areas that we need to. And again, for the most part, we're not allowing anybody to do anything. We are recognizing that what we had on the books was contrary to state law. We didn't have the authority for that, and we're adjusting our ordinances to address that by indicating that anyone who does these things must comply with those state laws.
So, can we entertain a motion? And then we'll...
I'll second.
A motion?
I'll second.
Motion to second. So, any discussion?
I have a question. So, this is basically just bringing us up to where the state... So, we're in line, right?
Right.
So, backing up to the meeting where there was the big coyote controversy, what exactly... I've actually been asked this a couple of times because I hear, you know, I live off Middle Creek, so I hear people shooting in Prentice Cooper all the time, especially during the holidays.
Right.
Kind of scares me, but are they allowed to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And if I'm walking to Rainbow Lake and a coyote comes to like attack me, can I shoot it if I have a permit and I'm carrying a gun?
If you're legally carrying that gun, then you have the right to protect yourself.
Okay.
Yes.
If it comes to attacking.
If it comes to attacking, but you can't hunt that part.
You can't hunt them.
No, I got that part, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have... I mean, I'm just asking because people would ask me this, actually.
How is Chattanooga reconciling the same thing? Are they having to amend their...
The provisions of 39171359 are the sections that were adopted here most recently dealing with handgun carry permits, and they were trying to make sure which locations handgun carry permit holders could have them. That section specifically provided for, there was some concern at the state level that people would be coming to every ballgame with a handgun carry permits and waving them around in the middle of the game. And that was one thing where the legislature said that they would not approve. So, if there are recreational activities that are ongoing at the time with children's sports activities, and that is one area when they couldn't do it. This provision under 11503 here that you've got in your version right now is trying to give you these sections, 39171359, which are to be enforced. And it's interesting to me here, the requirement, and there's been a lot of discussion back and forth about how can you restrict the possession of a person who has a handgun carry permit from coming into any meeting? And one of the aspects is whether there are metal detection devices where you can actually search everyone in connection with a meeting that that would occur, where there's a law enforcement or private security officer trained to conduct inspections that would be ongoing, and then the person is entering it with a bag or something that might be a problem. You see every UT game that you go to these days, since this statute was passed, I thought it was intriguing, the last one I went to, everybody has to have a see-through bag so that they cannot be hiding something coming through there that might be a handgun in connection with that. There's also provisions here that we've got in this reference about any town-owned athletic field where a school-sponsored event is ongoing, or if there is something at the town hall, which is actually the courtroom here for the town of Signal Mountain, which that would occur. The problem that Chattanooga has in connection with this is their building where the city council sits is not a court building. So, that is just the city council meeting room. Here in the town, you have a little bit of an advantage over Chattanooga over that end under 39171359.
So, technically, no one can carry in this meeting here?
Because it is a judicial proceeding, yes.
Okay.
And then also law enforcement agencies under the state law, and then there's a provision about the library, that library section because there are kids involved in connection with that. Those are the limitations. But this is in accordance with the current statute, and whether that statute stays that way for long, I don't know. We'll have to see in that regard, but it's compliant with the current statute.
So, this is kind of similar to the county where you can shoot in your backyard in Hamilton County in areas, to my knowledge. Is that correct as far as the county?
I think the county does not have any ability to adopt an ordinance. They are still not a charter county in this area here. There are some charter counties in Tennessee which have the ability to adopt ordinances of their own. Hamilton County does not have that. They are simply allowed to enforce the laws of the state. So, the state laws would be applicable. That's why the TWRA regulations regarding hunting would be applicable in the county. Towns have more ability to regulate beyond that, and I think our Chattanooga ordinance currently does have a restriction against discharge of a firearm within a certain distance of a location. That's one issue, at least in connection with this. It's saying specifically in this code section in here that it's unlawful to discharge a firearm within the limits of the town, except whenever it is authorized or permitted by state law or the regulations of the TWRA. If someone's trying to shoot at you in your backyard, you are entitled to shoot back at them, but they are not normally, if by doing so, they are violating Tennessee law if they're trying to shoot someone.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, with respect to missiles, did the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, by their change in the law, choose to allow like surface-to-air missiles, ICDMs?
To this point, I don't think they've gotten in the missile business yet, but who knows under the Second Amendment whether that might be argued. I think right now, you know, it's intriguing for me because I was looking back at your original version while y'all were talking here a little bit. Under 11501, since before 85, it's been against the law to discharge an airgun or a BB gun here in the town. It's also against the law to maliciously throw any rock, snowball, bottle, or other missile at a building, tree, or other public or private property, or at a person. So, all of those regulations are there. All of those are violations of state law if it's done as an assault on an individual. The police department can clearly deal with those. The question is whether you need those in a town ordinance, which only has $50 fine ability best in.
Another complicating factor with if, just relative to air rifles or air guns, they are listed as lawful hunting implements. You can hunt small game and even a large game now with air rifles. I didn't know that. They actually have 50-caliber air rifles that are legal for hunting. So, as going through this, and we said, okay, well, firearms is fine, but, you know, air rifles are something different, and lo and behold, they're legal implements for hunting.
Any more discussion? Anyone else? It'd be great to continue this for a while because there's a lot of questions. I'd like to know if a coyote can strap a missile to its back and you paint a train tunnel on your wall, but another time. So, we have a motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor? This is first reading on this ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes on first reading 5-0. And the second part of this came about under the same circumstances.
Yes.
So, I'll read the header to this ordinance, first reading. "An Ordinance to Amend the Signal Mountain Municipal Code Title 20, Chapter 5, Entitled 'Signal Mountain Park Regulations and Guidelines.'" So, what are we changing in our park guidelines?
Just the section relative to possession of firearms. In general, possession of firearms will be allowed by a person who's authorized to carry firearm pursuant to 39171351 and further. Originally, when these were last passed, the town had the ability to restrict firearms from our parks. That has since changed, so this incorporates some of the language associated with handgun carry permit provisions.
Well, one other thing I think that's important under this is 39171351 is the concealed carry handgun section under Tennessee law. That's a pistol. This is not an open season on town property to go out and start shooting at things with any type of rifle or anything else. The town does have the power to regulate what is done on its own property, and if you don't give permission to be able to hunt, then you can't do so. And that is what paragraph nine says in this document. It's unlawful to commit any hunting provision. This is only for protection of individuals that have a concealed carry permit, and it's not whenever there are one or more students that are physically present on the park of the property engaging in a hike or something else that might be afraid at that point in time. So, handgun carry permit holders have an obligation under state law to not be involved in an incident that is an athletic event that is ongoing here, and that's just the way the law is currently.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
That one was first. Any additional discussion on this? It's pretty much the same topic we were talking about just a moment ago. It's a nice reading to read through this if anybody wants to look at this, that you aren't supposed to have your dogs off a leash on the trails, and you're supposed to pick up after them. And... Alright, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Carrie's 5-0. On first reading. Alright, do you... Amy, do you have the... So, the next one is "An Ordinance to Amend Title 1, Chapter 1, Section 1-101 of the Town of Signal Mountain Municipal Code in Reference to the Time and Place of Council Meetings." And we've had a couple of discussions about taking the work session and making it be an evening meeting like this, and I think it was Amy who suggested in the process of that that it might be good if we moved it to six to make it, since we're having two. Is that correct?
I don't know. I might have, but I'm looking at it going, I thought we said 6:30, and I'm trying to think how I'm going to get here at six. So, I may have shot myself in the foot without a permit.
So, what this... I'll read the line. It says the... Does it happen? Yeah. "The town council shall hold regular meetings at 6:00 PM on the second and fourth Monday of each month at the town hall." And for anyone interested in polling staff about this, staff has been... I haven't heard anyone from staff say they don't like the idea because it helps keep town business moving forward at a regular pace so that things don't have to wait a month for a vote. The arguments I've heard... Well, I guess we could discuss it after we have a motion, so.
I did say six. I remember now.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So, in discussion, the arguments I've heard against it are that it's, you know, it's night meetings, and that there's a question it raises. Is this any... Do we have a work session anymore? We just have two meetings? Do we designate... Does work session even mean anything? And do we sit up here or sit down there? Those are the questions that have come up.
We didn't make any decisions. I said I like it when we can sit almost in that round table fashion, sitting at the table. It's less formal, you're...
I think it's harder for citizens, though.
Well, we're compromising, one up here and one down there, and that would change the time.
It's also harder for video. It's also harder for audio. The more we get out in front of the speakers, the harder it is for the sound system to work.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm not married to it. I don't care.
Yeah, no, no.
I mean, I'm just...
I just want to put the... Have you heard any other pros or cons? Let's put them all out there.
I just worry with the... And I know we all kind of are trying to figure out a solution to allowing citizens to be more involved in what would be maybe a work session. My only concern is six, 6:30 to Mondays, right? Is it... You know, people who have children, the citizens that don't normally come because they have kid events at night that might come during the day, I just feel like we may miss that population, but I don't know that we can make everyone happy either.
Right. We... Tonight, and this is the first time I've done this, to help, I... Because we're streaming live from that camera over there, I posted on social media that the meeting has started, and here's the link so people can watch it. And I think that helps more people be involved.
Do you know how many people are watching?
I don't have a book, yeah.
Just curious. I think that is good, that it's easily accessible for people if they can't come in person to the meeting to at least be able to watch it at home. And maybe even more conducive if, since they're both at night, rather than having a work session during the day when people are occupied doing other things. Yeah.
I like the idea. I mean, I'm for it. I don't mind saying that because it's...
I'm for it, too.
Yeah. Often on weekends, as a musician, I need to travel somewhere, and Friday's a travel day, and rarely am I gone anywhere on a Monday. But that's one guy. What about you, Dr. Bob?
It's actually better for my personal work schedule, too.
What about holidays?
It helps me avoid one problem and...
Creates another.
That's kind of my sentiment, Dr. Smalling.
Some from column A, some from column B on this one. We'll try it.
Yeah. Okay.
I was just talking to Boyd. The provisions of your code are there because the charter requires that the council by ordinance will fix the time to have regular meetings. So, you had a question about what is a regular meeting, what is a special meeting? You may have a need to meet more than just two times a month at some point, so you can call a special meeting. You do have to at least provide notice that a special meeting is going to occur in the manner that you normally do for meetings to come up, but it doesn't mean that you can't have a meeting on another day. And I guess the only issue, I guess if you go to the second Monday and the fourth Monday of each month, you still have to consider the aspect of we usually have federal holidays that spill over a lot of times onto the Monday, so just be aware of that as it's going on.
Okay. Well, we can figure that out for the year.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, so will this change the January 28 meeting?
No. If you pass it tonight, we can have it at the January work session for second reading, so it won't start until February.
That's right.
And the reason you have to do this by ordinance is your charter requires it. So, if you're going to change anything other than what it normally says in here in the code, you have to do that by ordinance, and your current ordinance says one meeting a month.
And I'd like to hear from anybody watching this online from... If there are things that we aren't thinking of, why it's not a good idea, it'd be great to hear from citizens because this affects everyone, for sure.
What is the minimum or maximum amount of meetings you can miss?
Let's see.
Our charter says...
I thought there were three, but I'm trying...
Says three regular consecutive.
Consecutive meetings.
But you aren't... You don't... You know, then action has to be taken, nothing automatically happens.
But it's at the discretion of the council, too.
It's consecutive.
Correct.
Ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor of passing this on first reading?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0 on first reading. As we move into the discussion portion tonight, and it's town attorney selection time, and it's up to us as to whether or not we vote tonight. It's up to us how we vote tonight, if we choose to vote tonight. We don't have to have a motion to move forward on this. I'd like to suggest, and this is after getting some counsel... Um, I'd like to suggest, and this is after getting some counsel, that everything we vote on is public anyway, that when we, when we get down to, we have three candidates, and other ideas can, can come out as well, that we nominate all the people that we would like to vote for, and so if we get, only get one person nominated, then we've made our decision. If we get two people nominated, then we will have to vote. If we get three people nominated, we'll have to vote twice, because we'll have to bring it down to two people. So does that make sense? If all three people get nominated, then we'll vote twice to narrow it to two. If two people get nominated, then we'll vote once. Uh, that's a suggestion, and we had, uh, you guys wanna, we can discuss that now, uh, we can start talking about our candidate choices.
Well, I'll jump in. My impression, having interviewed all three candidates, is that the most experienced guy of the bunch is Sam Elliott. Following, not too far behind Sam, I guess, would be Harry Cash. Both of them very qualified. I thought the third candidate was, uh, not really up to speed, but if, if I were, um, moving to nominate someone, I, I would nominate Sam Elliott.
So, do you wanna do that now, or do you wanna hold that?
No, wait until everybody has a chance to.
Um, I'll jump in. Bill, I, I agree with you on, um, those two candidates. I felt like, uh, Mr. Cash had a ton of experience. I also thought Mr. Elliott did as well. Um, my concern with, with Mr. Elliott was just that he was stretched so thin and having so many conflicts, and with some of the things that we have coming up, um, that was a concern for me, it, it just trying to work around our attorney's schedule, and, and Phil has, doesn't have near the same commitments that he has, and he's had to juggle a lot, too, so. But I, I think, very, very qualified. I agree with you.
I agree with that. That's what, that was my kinda take on it, too. I think they're both so, well, I think they're, they're three excellent candidates, but I think there were two clearly, um, rise to the top, and, uh, I'm so impressed with Sam. I know him really well. He's a, I think he does a wonderful job for the municipalities that he represents, and I think Mr. Cash is another excellent candidate. I like, uh, the law firm that he works for and the attorneys that, uh, would be there to play a supportive role for him if there were scenarios that came up that maybe he hadn't seen before, or, um, so, I don't know, I'm having a hard time. I feel, I feel like we'll be well represented, what, however we vote.
Pretty much on the same page there. I, um, I think there's gonna be less conflict with Cash than there will be with Mr. Elliott, but all three of them could serve in that capacity.
So I'm not far from the rest of the council on this thing. I, I would definitely nominate, uh, Harry Cash as well. What, one of my main concerns, we really did have three great candidates. The way we pay them is, is what concerns me just a little bit. I'm afraid that Sam Elliott would cost us the most because of, uh, lack of availability. He's not gonna be as available, and it appeared that he would send representatives to some of our meetings, and we work a little differently than that here. I mean, it's like the attorney, Phil tucks me in at night. No, we, we have close relationships with our, you know, and, and there are folks who work with us all the time, and I think it would be difficult to have someone who's representing just what a legal opinion is as opposed to, like, they're a member of the town. And also, I guess I'm, I'm pushing for, for Harry for just a minute also, in that I think he, he's at a place in life where he can devote a lot of time to this.
And I, I think that there, you know, part of, those of us who just came through this election know there are a lot of consequential, thorny at times issues that we're gonna be grappling with in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
And I really, uh, like the idea that, um, like you say, that Harry is in a place that he really wants to, he can kinda pick and choose the things that he does according to the way that he talked when we interviewed him, and, uh, and also, I, you know, I'll reiterate, um, you know, he's, um, he's in with a really great firm of attorneys who have so much knowledge and experience and would give him very good advice, uh, when he, when and if he would need it.
I'll say this, too. Having been married to an attorney for twenty-five years, I know that being a partner is, means a lot in those big firms, meaning he's gonna have, to echo what you're saying, a little more time and has put in his time, um, just being so experienced and having been there so long. So I agree with you, Dan, about kinda being available, and with you, Susannah, with some of the things we have coming up.
My, uh, first choice is Phil.
Yeah, mine, too.
Has he tucked you into?
I can't say that, but...
Yeah, this, it's a, you know, because it, we're all gonna say it, and people would say it if it wasn't true, that we had three great candidates.
Right.
But we really did have three great candidates.
Really.
I have, I have a bunch of notes on all of them, and I, honestly, because of their different positions in life and what they do, I think Jim Exum would probably be the hardest working of the three, because of, that's just the way he can cross it. That's where he is at this stage in his life. I think Sam Elliott is by far the most experienced, specifically with what we do.
Yeah.
But I think Harry Cash may be the best fit for what we do and has enough experience for what we need and would be the most available to us. So, do we, uh, want to discuss more or entertain motions? Or entertain nominations?
Yeah, do we nominate one person?
No, this is a thing where we'll nominate and find out how many nominees we have.
Okay. I will nominate Mr. Cash.
Um, I'm gonna nominate Mr. Exum only from the standpoint that, um, I feel like the overwhelming aspect of this is, is gonna be Mr. Cash, um, but I would like for him to at least be recognized. I, I know that he has done a lot of work with fire and police, and we have a big component of that in our, um, in our town, um, but I do think, for reasons I said otherwise, that I think Mr. Cash will prevail.
Do we have any more nominees? So we close it out, so we have two, so we'll vote. We, we can just raise our hands. We can just say a name and raise our hands if that's the person we're voting for, and then we'll do it a second time.
As long as you hold them up long enough for Carol to see them.
Don't go like this. We can just raise our hand. It's all public information, anyway. So we'll go with, uh, Mr. Exum first, if that's okay? So anyone who would like to cast their, but we're voting one time only because we just have two, everyone understands, so there's not a, not a second opportunity to vote. Anyone who would like to vote for Mr. Exum, raise your hand. Raise it and hold it up. Now, got it? Anyone who would like to vote for Mr. Cash? That's it.
All right.
What's your method for notifying him and solidifying the contract?
Um, send him an email this evening or in the morning and schedule a meeting.
Okay. Will you also notify the other candidates?
Yes.
How long are you available if he's not available immediately?
Tell me when not to come.
He seems so happy.
Yeah, thank you, Phil.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn that off.
It's okay. So next discussion is, the item is MAC plans approval and additional requirements, so that's Boyd.
Let me get down here. Um, as you know, um, council approved moving forward with expanding the, um, project at MAC to include the, the rear of the building. Um, we discussed the possible ramifications of that in that it would involve more than just putting the sprinklers in. Um, one of the, the things we have to do is put different hardware on doors and all of that. That was relatively minor. Um, when we submitted the plans to the state fire marshals, they came back with comments, and, and there were some requirements, um, for, uh, more significant changes. Most of those had to do with, uh, egress from the building. So, um, we made those changes to the plan. One of them is a, we have to have a sidewalk from the rear of the cafeteria to the, to the stairs that go down to the alleyway. Um, and another is we have to have a, um, ADA compliant, uh, egress from the cafeteria area. Um, so, um, their architect, Ed Garby, um, revised plans for those and submitted those to the, the state fire marshal. This past week, we got those back, and the project in its entirety is, is approved.
Now, how much?
But, we had to then go back to the contractor and get, um, a quote for the, the cost of these additional, um, elements of the, of the project. Now, if you recall, we have gone back and looked at how we can save money, uh, on various aspects of the project. One, that this allows us to do is completely eliminate the separation wall between the two parts of the building. Um, so in, in a nutshell, I can go into as much detail as you would like, um, but in a nutshell, um, as it stands now, to put in the sidewalk, um, to make egress from the cafeteria to the, um, to the parking lot, um, hardware, every, everything that has to be done, and incorporating the changes that previously, uh, discussed, uh, and approved, but were subject to this approval, um, because we couldn't do some of those things until we didn't have to build that wall, things like that. Um, we're looking at an additional, uh, approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. That gets us to the point of completing this project.
Does this include tearing down the old buildings?
The portable, no, we will be, one of those has to come down. Uh, staff has looked at that, and, and we are going to do that in-house. So, cool, we think we can, that, based on what we've paid for demolition and other instances recently, that should be a significant saving, so I appreciate public works and works in wreck.
Can we sell that scrap? 'Cause it's all metal.
Well, the metal we will separate out and we'll take that to, to scrap. The rest of it will, we'll just have hauled, but the actual demolition we can handle.
Good.
Um, so, and we just today got this estimate on the additional costs, so...
How much of that's engineering?
There's nothing else on that.
Okay. So this is actual, physical...
This is the cost of the project.
What are they gonna, what is the change that's being made to the back door of the cafeteria for egress back there? Because there's already a concrete pad. What, what has to be done?
The, the, the main issue is you cannot use a kitchen as an egress route. So there'll have to be a separation wall, um, through that area so that where you're traveling is not part of the kitchen.
Where will they put that?
The plans that are approved have that, um, if you'll recall, if you're in the cafeteria area, looking towards the kitchen, there's a door on the right and a door on the left. You'll take that door on the right, the door will come off, that will just become a cased opening, and then basically a wall will go from that side straight back to where the door is, so that the, and, and that's really a travel corridor anyway. So you're gonna separate that off so that it is strictly a travel corridor.
Won't affect the laundry?
Pardon?
The little laundry that's there.
The, the, that stuff that's over there is, is fine. It just has to be separated from what's considered a kitchen, even though it's, whether it's used that way or not, that's technically what it is. So that's, that's what's approved by the state. That was a plan that was submitted, um, and that's what this, this estimate is based on, putting basically a, um, a rated firewall through there so that you're coming from the cafeteria down a hallway as opposed to through a kitchen. And then, on the other end of that building, or under end of that room, excuse me, um, connecting that door, um, to a, an established egress route, which are stairs, and we'll have to put handrails on that and, you know, some other small things like that, but the sidewalk and the egress route through what is now the kitchen are by far the two largest ticket items.
Okay.
But again, since we, we just got that estimate today, uh, the plans were just approved, we got that estimate, so it would be something that if, since we are discussing it tonight, if council was willing, we can bring a resolution to the, to the work session for the additional costs.
Is this estimate from the contractor that's there now?
Yes.
So nothing has to be bid?
This, this is a change order to an existing project.
Just a change order, okay.
And, and since they're doing concrete work there now, and we would be adding to that work as opposed to bringing somebody else in to do a standalone project, I think there's any doubt we're probably more cost-effective that way.
So you need direction from us on whether to bring this to the next meeting?
Yes, if we can get a, to the extent council's willing, um, consensus or approval, um, to move forward with the project as it stands, as it is approved, um, then we can draft necessarily documents for the work session.
Would you be more comfortable with a vote or just consensus?
That, that's always a little more solid, but that's council's discretion.
So entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I clarify with the motions, who's the board and who is the judge?
That's exactly right. Discussion?
What's the total now for the MAC, since last year?
You know, the one sheet I didn't print on...
Could you bring that to the meeting?
Absolutely.
No, we can, we can discuss that with the, with the... All right, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next discussion item is council facility and project field visits, and this was an idea that, uh, Susannah came up with, which is a really good idea, and I remember when I first came on the council, how lost I felt most of the time, which is only about half as much as I feel right now, and I think it would be great for us as a council to take a tour of different things that are happening, like tour of the MAC, tour of the bridge replacement project, take a look at the ball fields that exist, 'cause that's gonna be something we have to look at, you know, throughout the year, and we just have to not discuss anything we might deliberate.
Just don't deliberate in the process, yes.
Right.
Yes, you'll be fine.
Yeah. So do you want to schedule that with all of us?
Well, that was, the, the notion of having it on the agenda tonight was being a, a night meeting to make it, um, public that those were going to happen. Uh, it is allowed. They, they're not public meetings. We don't invite the citizens to attend, but we wanna make sure they know that they're gonna happen, and, and why. Um, and then, that being done, then it's certainly discretion of the council to schedule, and we'll, we'll move forward.
I mean, I suggested, I guess we could invite Emily Christman or, you know, somebody from, who regularly attends meetings for the media to come and, sure, listen, just to make it more transparent, you know, if that's gonna be a concern for anyone, but...
I can get us all helmet cams.
That would be actually kinda cool to have, uh, have... That would be actually kinda cool to have a GoPro, and we could stream it.
So if you'll schedule that.
But I do think that would be helpful, and I think, you know, to have everybody together as a group. So even though maybe you know what projects we're talking about in all of these meetings, for all of us sort of to be together at the same time, seeing all of the same things, and, you know, it'll be definitely a learning experience for me, but maybe for everybody else too. So, would we go like in a van, or do we... Does the town of Signal Mountain own a van? Or can we, yeah?
We've actually done it different ways. We, a couple of vehicles we could take, or we can rent a van, and...
I think we should, really? Oh, I think part of it is like kind of being in the car at the same time. Well, there's five, I mean, I have, I have a bourbon we can get in my car. Yeah. I don't wanna rent a van, I don't wanna spend taxpayer money. Okay, I think, I just think... I'll donate the gas. If we're all, you know, in the same car.
You'll still have, then, I mean, you'll still have another vehicle with staff, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Whatever y'all wanna do. Again, it's...
If we can get all the town facilities, we can help as well, and then sort of get some areas.
I wanna see the projects, I wanna see the names. Like, all, exactly what... Like, put them in context, so when we're having... Shoal Creek, the bridge, everything we're voting on. We should need to go to the MAC and see exactly what they're talking about. Yes. It'll probably end up taking a while. Yeah. So, do we wanna talk about times now, or just email?
I think we can use that service where we all, what was that called?
I'll put out a doodle.
Doodle, yeah, we use doodles.
Are you looking at the next couple weeks, three weeks, next week? Just give me a general idea, so I can put a timeline on it.
I will have to do it soon. I unfortunately have to get a surgery that's gonna put me down for a little bit.
Is anybody out of town?
I'll do it before the end of the month, or before, in the next three weeks.
All right, anybody out of town for the next three weeks?
I'm looking at my calendar.
So doodle us, and we'll...
Next three weeks.
I mean, I think, I think we can, we can make it that broad.
All right, that's the end of the regularly scheduled discussion, so other business?
Got a question. When does the new attorney start?
We don't know. Sure.
Well, in case it's soon, as opposed to later, I wanna thank Phil for all his service, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I appreciate your guidance.
Well, thank you.
I would like to second that, Phil, thank you so much. You have put in more time and hours, and your heart has been in it for the best of the town. And it's obvious, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I get to do this again tomorrow night at, I think it's at 6 o'clock for the Chattanooga City Council. If you wanna come down and watch one of those, they're interesting sometimes.
Other business? I have a couple of quick things. One is, Boyd, what have we sent to MTS?
We have sent, Carol can help me with this. We've sent them the information on staffing and capital projects that you guys approved. We've sent audits from the last several years. I mean, most, everything that they requested, I think they have.
Do you know what we haven't sent? Is there anything that...
We have sent most of the items on the number eight. We've compiled it. I've gotten so crunched with the budget, trying to get the budget stuff out. It's been sitting on my floor in my office for the last couple of days.
Do you recall what number eight is?
It's the one that deals with the specifics, the number of customers, the amount of usage.
So the statistical information?
The statistical information. I have spoken with one of the MTS consultants, and we have identified which of our reports that we have available would be most helpful. Those have been compiled, and I need to get them scanned in and sent to her.
Okay. All right, thanks. The, one other thing that I have has to do with the website. I just wanna give everybody an update on what I've learned. I spoke today with Kristi Ballou. So we, we use a company called Local Government Corporation, LGC, and have for quite a few years. And they're sort of intertwined with the way things are done, you know, within town business. The phone call with Kristi Ballou, she's one of the two who maintain our website, just happened to come today, because I was talking with him about other things. And it's apparently made her aware that we're looking at options. And so they're starting to court us a bit about our website. I had made the comment here, and also made the comment to them, that it really looks like our website was about 1998. And she said, "You're pretty close to spot on right there." And Local Government Corporation inherited this website from another company they purchased. And there are several municipalities, there are only a few municipalities that still use what we have. They've transitioned all of their customers over to a newer system, which is based on a technology called Bootstrap, which is the same thing that Twitter runs off of. So it's modern CMS, Content Management System. What we have, for, the only person who's really, is Sherry here?
No.
Sherry needs like a gold medal and an orchard planted for her for the site. Imagine, you guys have all gone to the website, how the pages are extremely long. So, what you have to do to edit something on that website, scroll down to the place where you wanna be, get your cursor inserted there, scroll back up to the top, and click off of something that looks like Microsoft Word from 1994, what it is you wanna work on. Scroll back down and see what it is, type some stuff. Scroll back to the top if you wanna upload or put something in. It's just so archaic, and then scroll all the way to the bottom to press submit. And then go back and see if it was right. I mean, it's just, you don't do websites like that anymore. And so I understand some of the frustration with documents being placed on there. It's a pain, it's just really a mess to have to mess with it. Also, we're only allowed 10 changes per month. Did you know that?
Oh wow.
Without being charged.
Wow.
10 changes on a website without being charged, which is just ridiculous, because sites don't work that way anymore. We previously talked with Silvenus.
Brian Silvenus.
Brian Silvenus, you know, with the town, is a contact that Phil gave me, about the possibility of having them help shepherd us to move our Gmail system, that's a whole other problem, move our mail system to Gmail, and then possibly put us in the direction of some better ways to deal with the website. It turns out that local government also does all of that stuff. So they're gonna get us a quote on having them shepherd us to perhaps move over to email, to over to Gmail through them, and also have them help us, to move us over to another type of website that they build as well. And I know that that probably makes you feel a little better, because there are some other functions that could get complicated. So, anyway, that's where we are.
Is this a local company, or...
It's a name that makes them sound local wherever they are, but...
Yes.
Columbia, Tennessee.
Yeah.
Huh.
So, yeah, and I guess the reason I'm bringing, oh, and if, if we chose to work with them, they couldn't, because they're transiting a couple, transitioning some other municipalities to, they couldn't work on ours until around June. But that gives us time to get some pricing, and maybe as a council decide, you know, if that's the direction we wanna go in. And I guess I wanna know from you guys, and staff, if you want me to continue to try to get some more leads on this.
So is it your suggestion that this company that they've diverted everyone to is the one that we should be looking at?
Not yet. I don't know, 'cause I...
I know, 'cause I mean, maybe we should look at some, like, do an RFP or something and get some...
There might be some better options.
I mean, I'm kinda just kinda surprised that, that a company would, you know, store all of our content and wouldn't try to like, you know, bring us up to 2019, instead of letting us just languish in 1998, like. Did it...
Yeah.
I mean, are they just like not paying attention to who their customers are, or...
We haven't asked for it, probably.
Well, we have discussed, especially the email issues, and the response we got, we're working on a different solution. Literally, the email system we have now is no longer supported. So they're having to transition to something else.
It was end of life in 2014, and it's an open source program. And if anybody knows what an SSL is, a Secure Site License, we don't have one. So, and that's something that we need, even with what we have, we need to be paying for an SSL.
Because like, we're paying them money, right?
Yes. And that's why Bob, I'm not sure, I'm afraid they might be expensive.
But it, it just, for what it's worth, it's a lot more than just website and any...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of...
Our accounting software, court software, all of that stuff, and for the most part, we get really good service from them. This, our, what you normally think of as kind of the basic IT stuff is really over here by itself, and that's where we really, you know, we probably do bear some of the responsibility. And, you know, for, it's what we've had. And switching and changing, and Dan and I have had the discussion several times about, oh, you know, this is really pretty straightforward stuff, it's easy stuff, it's whatever. And my response is, if you know anything about it. And I don't, we don't. With Sam now, is probably our most educated in that area. We've never really had anybody that could take this on, and been extremely helpful in that process. So, all of that to say, it may not just be them.
No, no, and I don't think I'm actually faulting them. I think we have what we bought, and it's worked, it works really well, it's consistent.
Well, that, I think, yeah, all the, all the stuff behind the scenes, kind of, you know, that's the more technical and IT geared, but all the stuff that's sort of, the pretty stuff, or like the stuff that's really useful, like the email and the website, and that's kind of, you know, that's sort of like the billboard to your community if somebody from outside is looking us up, so it's important, you know?
Well, and also, I think just if we can integrate... I'm sorry, interrupted.
No, I'm glad that you're looking at it.
If we can integrate a website that becomes easier for staff to use, there's not this point of resistance where you say it'd be great to get the council pack it up before the meeting, so citizens can see the same things we're doing. I put it up this week for the first time, and we'll probably start to do that on a regular basis. The biggest problem is, and only if you pick up the nuance of what he's saying, the accounting system that these guys use works through local government. So to just to jump...
All of our financial software, all of our hardware, everything comes through this corporation.
Yeah, so even though...
So it's not like some kind of easy...
No, it's, it's very tied, so even though we might find something that looks better and is cheaper for website and for Gmail, there are some advantages to working through them, even if they cost us a little bit more, and so that's what... So Bob, it may ultimately end up being that one, but that's where we are.
Your original question was just, do, does the council want you to proceed in looking at other options, right?
Yeah.
I think we're all in agreement.
Yep.
I didn't, I think I might have...
No, 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 that's fine. Just, you know, as a point of clarification, when you talk about local government, their name is what it is, because that's what they do. They do specialize in government service. Now, we are not a large client, and maybe that's part of the reason we are where we are, but for the kind of things we do, they do it well. And they provide good service, take care of our computers. We purchase through them, probably pay a little bit more for a computer than we would somewhere else, but we pick up the phone, and not having an IT person...
Yeah, that's...
You pick up the phone, and probably the next day or so, they're here to take care of it.
Yes, or maybe it's just the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Yep.
Yeah, or pays for each time you call. And that, because that's how this, that's how this company works. So, I'd like for the next step actually to be, to show Sam what I've learned about. The site, the site is usable, and I think some of like the open records stuff that you guys have done would be so much easier if the documents were just available. And they're not that hard to put there. I under, they're, it's cumbersome. And I even asked him about, you know, like all, we have, we have a long page, you have minutes, ordinances, resolutions, and it's hard to find things. Even moving those off onto another page, well, they charge to do that. That's called a changed here website. But if we just got them to set up four pages, and not do anything with them, you could do it, even though you don't know you could. We could move that stuff over, and you, as the compliance officer, could make sure it was all moved properly, because it's, without worrying about breaking anything, so... All right, anyway, that's enough on that. I have nothing else.
The, one thing I wanted to follow up with Paul's little commentary on the centennial. Part of that is the shuttling, did you get any more information about the church? There was some question about utilizing the church property or something with their shuttles, or, or we have to pay for a shuttle?
Sam, we're working on that, we're looking at, Alexian has a small bus, and we've used actual school bus in the past like for hodgepodge. So we're looking at different options to see what, what we can line up.
Thanks.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.